Okay, we're going to convene tonight's meeting of the Board of Selectmen for the 30th of May 2012. Libby has brought to my attention, we have neglected to put on the agenda announcements and public comment because we were purposely trying to take your vacation, I'm just kidding. So, we're going to start tonight with public comment. Is there anything from the public, matters not currently on the agenda? All right, seeing none announcements, Libby, any announcements?
Madam Chairman, I have some items to bring to you under the Town Manager's Report, which actually also isn't technically listed on there. But, I did want to make one brief announcement. If anybody recalls former Police Chief David McCormick, he preceded Randy Norris. He has passed away on May 27th. He was the chief here from 1982 to 1984, just letting the board know, a former town official.
Okay, thank you. All right, tonight's meeting, first item, Treasurer, request for approval of sale of bond anticipation notes, bonds, and advanced refunding bonds. Oh, I'm so sorry, Dan, yes, 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 yes. One second.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Nantucket Memorial Airport Commission for May 30th. The agenda item for us primarily is the review of Nantucket Municipal Airport Financial Management Report prepared by Financial Advisory Associates. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, so we have convened the Airport Commission as well as the Board tonight. Treasurer, request, I won't read it again because I have a whole page and a half to read if I don't get a volunteer.
You'll have to read that whole page after.
Do you want to slide it?
I'm going to, I think.
Well, we're doing bonding banning, and we've done some bonding, some advanced refunding and current refunding of 2001 and 2003 bonds. I've got a whole packet there in front of you. It's water company, airport, there's some sewer in there, there's the CWMP, and I just need you to take a formal vote. Homewood Pond Road's in there too, excuse me, Homewood Pond Road Bike Path.
Okay. Any questions for Deb? Rick, yeah?
Did you go over a couple of items?
Sure.
I'm just curious, for example, Phase 2B, if I'm looking at the schedule, the sewer are all in the same page. Grabbing sewer, $2 million. And, I'm just trying to remind myself and maybe others, is that, that's the $2 million we thought was necessary above the previously authorized $5 million, Libby?
Correct.
And the $5 million was a couple of years ago?
Yes.
And was that borrowed at that time?
No, we're going to do that in September. We're going to get started with this, and then we're going to borrow the remaining of it when we go out in the fall.
Okay, so you're borrowing in phases, so to speak. And the CWMP plan, that's for the planning process, what's the term of that? How long are the bonds out for? Because that's a plan, not a physical asset, I'm just curious.
I think that's 10 years. I don't, it's in the packet there, there's the whole debt schedule that's in there. These just arrived at 4:15 this afternoon, so I haven't had a chance to completely look at them.
Just one, I have needed, one other quick question then, is on the bond anticipation note, this is on the first sheet of the handouts, it indicates $8,968 and a maturity of 6,713?
Yep.
And what are the prepayment options to the town, if any, on those notes? How does that work?
We originally got them in 2011. We rolled them in February of 2012, of which at that point we had to pay down on two projects, three projects, I think. And they're due again in June of 2013. We don't prepay them.
We don't, we just, we pay them at maturity.
Yeah, once they mature in the, in the, that year, then we decide whether we want to long-term them, or if we pay them off with grant proceeds.
So if grant proceeds happen to be received earlier, much earlier in some cases, that's okay?
Yes.
We set the proceeds aside, I assume, and use them for the payment at maturity? Is that how it works?
Yes. The CWMP is for five years.
Ties it to maybe the planning horizon, I guess, is the idea? Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Rick. Any other questions? All right, do I have a motion? Well, we're going to have to read the motion, but I have consensus to start this, right? Because I don't want to read the whole motion and find out we're not going to go there.
We can make a deal.
We can make a deal on that?
Yeah.
All right, why don't I have a volunteer for the first three sections, the second four sections, and then the last page?
I'll be happy to start.
Okay, thanks, Rick.
This is the vote of the Board of Selectmen, voted that in order to reduce interest costs, the Treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44. This is the right resolution, correct? I just want to make sure I've picked up the right piece of paper. Chapter 44, Section 21A of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, one, to refund on a current basis the town's $4,823,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of the 2001 bonds dated May 15, 2001, maturing on May 15, in the years 2013 through 2021 inclusive; and two, to refund on an advanced refund basis the town's $5,425,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2003 bonds dated December 1, 2003, maturing on December 1, in the years 2014 through 2023 inclusive. Perenn together the refundable bonds, and perenn, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium and interest on the refunded bonds and the costs of issuance of the refunding bonds. Further vote, that the sale of the $16,000, $15,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2012 bonds of the town dated June 7, 2012, perenn the bonds and perenn, to Raymond James and Associates at the price of $17,860,881 and 10 cents, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on December 1 of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. Further vote, that the bonds maturing on December 1, 2031, a term bond, shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows. That's the end of Part 1.
Pass it to Whitey.
All right. Further vote, to approve the sale of $8,968, $968,090 at 1.25% general obligation bond anticipatory, anticipation notes of the town dated June 8, 2012, and payable June 7, 2013, parentheses, the notes, close perenn, Morgan Stanley and Company LLC, at par plus a premium of $93,537.18. Further vote, that in connection with the market and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 24, 2012, and a final official statement dated May 30, 2012, parentheses, the official statement, close perenn, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further vote, that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 24, 2012, and a final official statement dated May 30, 2012, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted, that vote, that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the official statement.
Do you want to do it?
Sure.
Thanks.
Further vote, to authorize the execution and delivery of a refunding escrow agreement to be dated June 7, 2012, between the town and US Bank National Association as refunding escrow agent. Further vote, that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing and significant events, disclosure, undertakings in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-12, in such forms as they may be approved by bond counsel to the town. Which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds and notes, as applicable, for the benefit of the holders of the bonds and notes from time to time. Further vote, that we authorize and direct the Treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures, in such form as the Treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds and notes. Further vote, that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer, be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions, and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents, as may be determined by them, or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes, dated May 30, 2012.
Thank you. So moved? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, thank you.
Patty, can I have one follow-up? Just, is there a way to, because I gather these bonds have already been sold, sort of what the interest cost was? Maybe just, is it all here?
Yeah, it's all on the front page. The vans came in at 0.204%.
0.24, so that's a quarter of 1%?
Yes. And the bonds came in at 2.37%.
2.27, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, review of Nantucket Municipal Airport Financial Management Report prepared by Financial Advisory Associates, Inc.
Madam Chairman, sorry, before we get too deep into that, I wanted to just do some quick Town Manager Report items.
Okay.
Unless you want me to do them after.
Sure, go ahead.
And one quick thing, back to the bond sale, our bond rating remained the same, AA2 and Mig 1. On the Town Manager's Report. I emailed you all this, but for the public's information, we have received and have in hand our $500,000 donation from an anonymous donor, thank you very much, for the Homewood Pond Road Bike Path. There was a graduation of the Second Citizens Police Academy last Thursday. Greg and I attended, and we were very, very impressed by it. We wanted to give special singling out to Officers Chris Carnavalli and Keith Mansfield. They did a really excellent job arranging and coordinating this program, and there were a lot of really positive comments from the attendees, so we wanted to share that with you. Also, thanks to some code enforcement personnel and the fire chief for some work they did last Friday after 4 o'clock of Memorial Day weekend to get at least one downtown business open, who began a lot of extensive work in his restaurant with no permits, and they worked hard to work with him to get the place open, I won't say what the name of it is. And I emailed you guys yesterday about having one or two board members participate on a 20 South Water Street, or that might not be what it ends up being called, but a space needs work group that will focus on long-term town space needs, as well as revisiting the renovations that were proposed for the 20 South Water Street building. Any takers? We'll probably meet once or twice a month for the next few months, probably in the late afternoon.
Bruce and I, looks like.
Bruce and Patty, great, thank you very much. Lastly, I asked the chief to give a brief update of Memorial Day weekend, how it went, anything significant to point out?
Well, from what I hear, the local businesses are saying let the good times roll. The crowd was quite extensive over the Memorial Day weekends, many people attest that were present. We had, myself, on Monday, I observed a line of people from the gangplank of the Eagle all the way back to the Whaling Museum, that were leaving the island at the end of the weekend. So, that was probably the first time in the eight years I've been here I've seen anything like that. We're quite busy, both the police and the fire departments over the weekend, although compared to the prior year, they weren't that much more intensive, we just had a few extra things. It seemed this year, the, the big increase was in the number of medical calls that were required. Seemed like everybody was tripped stumbling and falling downtown, and getting injured, and ended up at the hospital for something. The fire department had 16 alarm calls, six med flight calls, 17 EMS calls, and one fire call over the weekend, for a total of 39 calls compared to 31 last year. The police department, we had 18 disturbance calls, 47 motor vehicle stops, which was a significant increase over the prior year, 18 suspicious person calls, 15 medical calls, and 25 noise complaints that we dealt with, for a total of 300, in all, with all the calls we deal with over the weekend, we had 381 calls for service from Friday through Monday, compared to 263 last year, but most of those calls for service were things that didn't require a lot of effort compared to prior years. The things that required effort were about the same as prior years. We had, what we observed was a lot of the alcohol problems, many, you know, we didn't have any violations that we were able to observe in any of the local licensed establishments. Several of them continued their practice of checking with the police department whenever they had suspected underage drinkers. They would call us, we'd go up there and, and deal with that. And they discovered them as they were trying to get in, they would card them properly, and if the IDs didn't look proper, we would go up and check, and we would tell them, you know, we can't verify or we can. We had worked pretty good with the Fugawi Group this year about staffing. They actually paid for about a dozen extra police officers to be on hand that evening until 1:00 in the morning, so it didn't cost the town a lot of extra money. Normally what happens, they work the tent, and soon as the tent closes, the officers are off duty, well, the Fugawi Organization agreed to allow them to stay on duty until the town cleared out. So our hands off to them, that was a significant savings. So, if you have any particular questions, the other thing we noticed that was down this year compared to last year, it seemed like last year we had a lot of disturbance calls throughout the island in different residential areas. This year, that number was significantly down. We did have 18 arrests this year, a couple of them were for OUIs. Most of them were for, I shouldn't say arrest, we had 18 in custody's. Seven of them, I believe, were for protective custody's. Those were people who were too intoxicated, couldn't remember where they were staying, whatever, and so we had to hold them until they were sober enough to, to be released. We had one motor vehicle theft, we had just the other things that kind of go along with, with the alcohol consumption. But, that compares a little bit more than we had in prior years. I think last year we had 12, but we had more PCs last year out of the percentage than we had this year, so.
Okay. Questions for the chief? Rick?
Not so much on the specific weekend, but it does remind me, sort of after each of these two weekends, this one and the July 4th, we, we often discuss at the board level or have a work group planning for the next one, and see if we can do things better in trying to understand where behavior interfered with, let's say, our citizens in various ways. So, I, I am, it just brings to mind July 4th, it's sort of around the corner, and I understand there's been some planning about possible community approaches to that, and sort of wondered, is there going to be anything different this year, or how are we set up for that at this point? Or maybe it's premature, Libby, but...
You, you have an agenda item on your meeting next week to discuss that.
Okay.
The chief may be able to answer some quick questions now, but there's going to be a presentation and a scheduled discussion next week.
Well, that's fine, I'll take it up there, I mean, but I, it's just, it's topical, you know?
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Chief, what would you say our margin for error is like on a Memorial Day weekend? I mean, how close are we to having our emergency services taxed to the point where we simply can't keep up?
Well, the biggest risk we have is with the fire, EMS. 17 EMS calls is a significant number, and the problem is, is they don't happen evenly spaced throughout the day. They happen when most of the crowd is gathered, and most of the crowd is reveling. And so, you know, it, you can tie up one, two, or three EMS units, and that's all we have, is three ambulances, very quickly on something like that, and then you have another medical emergency, such as a heart attack or something, out in another part of the island, there's nobody to go. The emergency room was, again, they would report that this Memorial Day, they were probably as overwhelmed in the emergency room as they were last year at 4th of July, and they report a lot of their problems, that they were, people they were treating were, it was alcohol-related. So, it is a significant risk for our EMS facilities and ability to respond. As far as the police go, Memorial Day weekend was not overly taxing for us, because we had all the extra people on duty for the Fugawi event. If we didn't have the Fugawi event, it'd probably be a different story. 4th of July is a different story, which we'll talk about next week, because we just don't have the people, and nobody's paying for it but us, that we do have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on Bruce's question, so, for example, you know, if that situation with the emergency trucks does occur, does that suggest that for a weekend like this, that we ought to be thinking about having two extra trucks on the island before the weekend starts, just to feel more comfortable, or not? I mean, that's a, maybe an emergency preparedness issue, Libby, that we ought to be conscious about, rather than just waiting for, after the fact?
Is that in fact an option?
It is an option, and actually, the fire chief and I have talked about that. The problem is putting it in practice. You know, other communities are just as busy as we are, in, in some respects, and so getting the apparatus and the equipment's really the problem. But, it's not something that's totally out of the question, it depends on how much we want to pay for it, probably.
Okay, and we'll have more about that next week. Thank you, chief, very much. And, and thanks to the departments, too, fire yourselves and the emergency room at the hospital, sounds like they were very busy.
All right, Madam Chairman, I'm sorry, one very last quick thing. About a year ago, the board voted to impose a parking restriction on a portion of Macy Lane, and asked for a report back on how it went. I have a report back from the chief, I believe I emailed it around to everybody, and it seems as though the parking situation has improved, and there haven't been any major complaints.
Great. Right, is that all, Libby?
Yes.
All right. So we're now going to go to the review of Nantucket Municipal Airport Financial Management Report prepared by Financial Advisory Associates, Inc. Do you want to start us off, Libby?
Sure, I introduced Michael Daley of FAA, Inc., and he was asked several months ago to prepare a report on what, really sort of the whys about how some of these airport issues came about, and I know that the report has been somewhat controversial, but he's going to take us through it, and then I think is prepared to answer our questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you for having me. I'm going to walk you through the report, and so, tonight's workshop, I want to introduce my firm, I want to review the content of the report. I'd like to talk about the recommendations, and then we can take all the questions and answers we'd like.
Excuse me, Mike, we're, we're just looking at the second screen over here, which for us, at least for me, is new.
It's a novelty.
It's a novelty, and nice to see it, that's a plus. Sorry, you're right, but...
My pleasure.
You might have caught us looking over there.
We could have moved that very...
That's, that's quite all right, you look any way you want, it doesn't really matter. You can still hear it no matter where you look. A little bit about my firm, we've been a Massachusetts corporation since 1994. That puts us on the range of about 18 years of delivering services to cities, towns, and districts. I can truthfully say 125, I've never sat and counted, but we're probably moving up fairly higher than that, but we've served at least 125 separate and distinct governmental clients throughout the northeast of our country. We've ranged from as far south as Annapolis, Maryland, to the north side of New Hampshire, Peterborough, New Hampshire. Our first instance of, of service to Nantucket was in 1999, when you came up on the munis system. We were subcontracted to your information systems consultant, and we delivered a chart of accounts for you back in 1999. We came back out in 2004, primarily to work on some cash issues, and we were then engaged to train some employees throughout fiscal 5, 6, and 7. We came back out when we won a proposal in 2010, we reviewed your legal services, and I can tell you that just recently, the Department of Revenue sought a release from my company to allow them to highlight that work that you had done as a, an example of good government throughout Massachusetts, and the Massachusetts Department of Revenue is going to do some kind of publication about your success with that particular piece of work. I came back out at the beginning of this fiscal year, mainly because you were in a transition between a former finance director and deliberating on a new finance director, so we were engaged for a six-month purpose of helping with transition. We completed the tasks that we were contracted for, and just as the, the year turned, right around the first of the year, our contract expired in December, we were asked to extend our contract, help the town deal with some of the reporting and accounting issues relating to your airport, and ultimately, before we're finished, we were also asked to take a look at the cause and suggest some improvements. As a means of introduction, our effort was mainly focused around how did this occur? We are management scientists, we are not auditors. We were not engaged to perform an audit. And our report considers all of the municipal corporation contributors, we've looked at both the internal contributors and the external contributors. Apparently, your local newspaper made a FOPA, and they interpreted this report to be the forensic audit report that they've been expecting, you've been expecting for a considerable period of time. I spoke with the publisher of your newspaper today, and she did advise that they were sorry that they had made that mistake, and as a result of their mistake, I think there's some misinformation about the community. Our charge was not to do an extensive transactional investigation, we were not engaged to deal with specific events and, and name names. There are a number of others that are doing that already for you, and their time will come as well, they'll be before you to explain their findings. Our Markham is, is a large accounting firm that's actually doing the forensic audit, and the Department of Revenue is also performing a operational audit. We have been consulted on both of those by both of those entities, as to what we can contribute to their efforts to try and help you as well. But, our charge is about fixing and preventing future management problems. We did not engage with you to try to blame citizens, we highlight the fact that citizens have rights, and that they can take initiatives if other management tools don't work on their behalf. But I, I want to stress to you that we were not engaged to perform any audits, and unfortunately, the local newspaper thought that's what they were getting. As a means of introduction, our report finds several things that are very easily defined. Your management problems are basically rooted within your current Home Rule Charter, and that's something we talk about fixing. The problems are more about behavior than anything else. They're rooted in a behavior. They have built up over a long, long term. We saw evidence and tried to help solve some of this back in the last decade, when we were out here during the early part of, of the previous decade. There are contributors, both internally in the corporation and externally, that work for the corporation. There are multiple management system flaws within the airport organization that contributed to this, so we have flaws in both the town's systems and the management of the airport systems. And we conclude that behavior modification can be forced into your corporation by citizens taking action under the general laws that allow them to revise their Home Rule Charter. It isn't a necessary action, but it is an ultimate action. It isn't a necessary action, but it is an ultimate action that can be taken to, we believe, resolve the problem at its root cause. We reviewed your governance document because that is a area that, that is a device that drives, I seem to have lost the audio, I hope that's okay. Okay, it's back, thank you. So when we look at your charter, the true governing doctrine of the town, we find that that's where the root cause is located. The primary cause is the lack of any rules pertaining to the airport's operation. Your charter document exempts the airport from your central administration, and it's very specific about that. The problem is your document then doesn't define the rules and regulations that you want the airport to use. So in effect, you say, all the rules that apply to everybody else pretty much don't apply to you, but then you don't take the next step and suggest that these are the rules we want you to oblige yourselves of. Because that failure to regulate the operations at the airport is embedded into your charter, the corporate mentality was that they're autonomous, we can't do anything about the behavior. They sort of have a free and open range to run the shop out there any way they see fit. And that theory of autonomy unchecked over a long period of time allowed problems that were more behavioral to enjoy metamorphosis into much more management-type of problems. So it started in the charter, it's existed for a long time, there's an uneasiness about where the rules are applicable and where they are not. We lay out governments in a way that's pretty familiar to most people. We have generally got an executive branch, and we generally have a legislative branch. At the federal and state levels, we incorporate a third tier into our governments, and that's the judicial branch. We, as municipalities, pretty much don't have that piece of the operation of government to concern ourselves with. Your charter does a very good job of defining the executive branch, and it speaks very loudly about the sharing of power. And when we do design of government documents and we design the governing doctrines, we talk about the sharing of power. And in your situation, your Board of Selectmen and your Town Manager under your charter share the executive power. What your charter does is it says that executive power doesn't apply to the airport. You sort of grant the Airport Commission its own executive authority the way your charter is drafted. So the way your behavior occurred in your organization, your executive branch, which is Board of Selectmen and Town Manager, I don't think fully understood all of the contributing factors that have gone on over the period of time that it's been going on to the level that perhaps it should have. Clearly, your appointment process didn't detect certain behavioral patterns, and then your reappointment process doesn't appear to have ever made an attempt to correct or modify those behaviors. Your Town Manager reads the charter and says, "It's not within my purview." And I think to some degree, that uneasiness about where the executive authority that rests with the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager was so unclear that there was never any certainty within your executive branch where the executive branch's authority boundary was, if you will, and where the executive authority that accrued to your Airport Commission was. The boundary lines are very unclear based on the way your document defines those boundaries. Your charter makes reference to the Airport Commission twice in the entire document. If you, if you open up that PDF file and you search for the word "airport," you're going to see that in the Appointment section, the executive authority, your board, is granted the authority to appoint an Airport Commission. And then in the Executive section, where it defines who is subject to what you term "central administration," it defines that the Airport Commission is not subject to the central administration. Those are the only two times your charter ever mentions the word "Airport Commission." So it says, "You create one," and it says that your manager and your central authority is not in charge of it, and then it just is silent. So I think it's more of an omission than it is anything else. So what is a poor Airport Commission to do? In all defense of them, they asserted the autonomy and total executive authority that everyone believed that they had. They started to get askew when they, as over time, because they began to reject what I call universal corporate management systems, the stock management tools and systems that large organizations use to manage their bigger items. And then in government, we tend to take each department and organize them in such a way that they have common activities that they more centrally manage. So most government management systems employ larger, more universal systems for the higher-end management tasks, and then employ unique systems within the mission, if you will, of the particular departments. And I think in my report, I contrast our island home with the Police Department, and that's the way most municipalities find the most success in their management. So by the airport not using your pain classification system, your procurement systems, your budgeting systems, in fully embracing and using them and the talent in your organization to the max, they set themselves up for more potential failures. Over time, they got involved with a manager who clearly had failings. I have personally had interaction with that former manager over several periods of time on multiple topics, and saw up close and personal some of those management failings. And then the Airport Commission actually didn't recognize those failings and almost embraced them, and to some degree even may have rewarded them. So it's a long-time process where people just sort of, I say in the report, nature abhors a vacuum, and it does. And given the vacuum in your charter, somebody had to fill that role, and the Airport Commission stepped in and did it. Your legislative branch is your town meeting, and you have an open town meeting, so any citizen has the right to participate in town meeting, which is very democratic. As part of your legislative branch, we provide in Massachusetts functionality to the legislature in the form of advisory groups. So every Massachusetts municipality has some sort of, particularly at the town level, not so much in the cities, but they have a Finance Committee who is advisory to your legislative body. You have a Capital Program Committee, as do most. So your town meeting is relying on your incumbent volunteer organizations to flush out issues before they get to town meeting, and to sort of bring town meeting through a good finite process as it relates to budgeting both operations and capital projects. Your Finance Committee, I don't ever think was adequate in its budget review, and again, it goes to the obscurity of where their boundaries were and where the Airport Commission's boundaries were. I don't think the budgets have been vetted, in particular, the last few years, as well as they should have been. And I don't think they detected the severity of the problems and were able to alert either you folks, the executives sitting up here, or your legislature, which is your citizenry. The same was true even to, I think, a more extreme in the capital plan, because what happened over a dozen years or so has been multiple projects up into the '40s where borrowings were either short or over, grant revenues were either short or over, some projects got paid for but didn't borrowed, other projects got borrowed but never got used, and at your most recent town meeting, you reallocated about $2.5 million, I believe, of revenues and borrowings to sort of straighten out the imbalances that occurred over the last ten or twelve years as it relates to capital projects out at the airport. The same is true for your budget. Your budget was out of balance in Fiscal XI, it was out of balance in Fiscal XII. You just financed your way out of Fiscal XII using general fund resources to bridge your airport operation, and your XIII budget isn't really fully completed and nailed down and approved at the Department of Revenue yet. So at least XI, XII, and XIII, the budgets have been really out of balance. And some of the capital projects are still not loading onto the budget. The debt you did tonight has impacts on your XIII and beyond budgets. Future debt is going to continue to affect the operating budget costs of that debt service in that airport operation. So when we look at your executive branch, the town meeting, multiple advisory boards, the Select Board, the Capital Program Committee, Finance Committee, may not have done as good a vetting process and made as good a recommendation to town meeting as they could. And over a period of time, multiple uninformed budget and capital votes were cast, and those votes begot the situation that you just dealt with at your town meeting and the situation that you'll be dealing with into XIII and during XIII and perhaps beyond. Employees, they certainly have a piece of this. Your former Finance Director, I don't believe was actually properly accounting and reporting for the activity at the airport. So the budget and capital reviews that were brought to your advisory committees yourselves, I don't believe were adequate. Your Finance Director didn't detect, or if she did, she didn't have the courage to adequately report the problems to you folks as the executives, your predecessors. Not so much to indict you folks. But over time, a weak Finance Director and a strong Airport Manager resulted in a lot of these problems festering over time without the proper attention from the right folks. On the other hand, the Airport Manager, the oversight, I think, was inadequate because it was too aggressive. I think that that manager felt that anything and everything was appropriate, and as a result, it was inadequate in an overambitious way. He had a bad style with it when it came to people, you know? It wouldn't be unfair, I think, to use the word bully, especially as it related to his fellow corporate officers and the senior management team. Clearly, if he did detect, he didn't alert, but I believe that he didn't know that he was creating problems that would flow through and be having repercussions of this level as they have, say, in the last six to twelve months. And if he didn't detect them, shame on him. If he did, he certainly failed to alert the Commissioners, he failed to alert the executive body, and he failed to alert your town meeting. So clearly, there are staff problems that I believe are gone that mitigate some of these problems immediately, and there are others. One of the distinct problems that I believe has contributed to this over time is, in that ability to be autonomous, at some point somewhere, the Airport Commission decided that it was appropriate to go out and get their own CPA firm. I'm not quite sure as to exactly what those contracts require or didn't require, but clearly there was a set of eyes, and there was an accounting system that was going on that wasn't formatted in accounting in what the state requires for its communities to report. So the Airport Commission was trusting and believing an accounting system with accounting professionals that were, I believe, failing their client. The annual accounting and reporting that, if it had been proper, would have detected these problems, and it would have enabled those accounting professionals to notice their client that they had a problem. That didn't happen. So somehow, in their participation in any of the annual budgeting and capital procedures, and we saw that happen, I saw it happen in this recent XIII, XII budget cycle to some degree, the Commission was working with inadequate information, and they were developing business plans, I believe, with inadequate information. If they didn't detect, and shame on them, if they did detect, then they should have reported. And again, they did not flag the problems in a timely way so that the Airport Commission could begin to react in a more controlling manner. So clearly, by having, I call it two sets of books. Were there failings in the town's record-keeping? Yes. Did they do a really good job of providing the airport operation with the best set of accounts and management information? No. But to some degree, that was because there was resistance at the airport to join into the systems that were being utilized by every other organization in the corporation. They opted to assert their authority and go out and engage their own computer system, their own accounting software, their own CPA, and in effect, they created two sets of books. Theirs weren't correct, the towns are the ones that the Department of Revenue used to do their due diligence and to do their approval processes. So the fact that the airport had a system was great, but it wasn't being reconciled back and forth to the town system, which is being used to drive all of the reporting and accounting for the activities within the town in the way that the state mandates it be handled. There was a breakdown, and it further exacerbated the communications and relationship problems of the professionals, because there was too much time being spent arguing over who had the right numbers and whose numbers are right, instead of working together to say, "Well, jeez, we have a disparity, let's reconcile." Because we do, as CFOs in Massachusetts, require our departments to affirm that their records are being properly managed for them. It's like reconciling your checkbook. You send out a report under the statutes, it's mandatory every month. The Finance Department sends out a report, the departments say, "You got it right, we don't see any errors, let's keep on going." That reconciliation process was not happening because of this independence and this autonomy dispute that was existing between the rest of the corporation and the operation that manages the airport. The town CPA firm, we've heard, you know, people say, "Well, we had two CPAs." Yes. And your CPA firm was performing an audit of your financial records. They are, and were, adequate. Your audits generally tend to review the past. Audits aren't designed to timely defect problems in advance. That's a different set of systems that you manage. And your audit firm has made comments, but their issues were of a greater hierarchy, and so while over the past, say, four or five years, the improvements have been being worked out, that they wanted to see the priority of the airport's operation wasn't in their hierarchy of important issues. So they tended perhaps to not flag that matter as vigilantly as perhaps they may have or should have or could have. You have another firm that helped you with the process you just went through tonight, where you voted to issue bonds and notes, and they're called, we refer to them in the industry as FAs, they're your financial advisors. Their role is to help you not only when you issue debt, but their role is also to make sure that you properly account for it and you do what the federal government and the state government say you're supposed to do with bond proceeds. Unfortunately, their monitorization, they actually do some report filing for you to the federal government on issues of, because you sell your debt in a tax-free market, you're highly regulated. I don't think they hit all the high points of their responsibilities relative to working with the staff, but recognizing that these problems were greater than they were, and you are borrowing money and never spending it on what you borrowed it for, they're supposed to flag that up through the organization to the executive branch if it's necessary. And again, they're working with employees who may not be flowing information up to your top employee, who may not be getting the information to you. So I think that they could have done a better job of making sure that your Finance Director, your Town Manager were knowledgeable that there were problems afoot in those your town manager were knowledgeable that there were problems afoot in those borrowings, the state regulators. You have to submit to them income statements and balance sheets in their format every year, and they use that to determine your free cash, or in the case of enterprise accounting funds, the retained earnings of that fund. The annual reports that they've received over a number of years, I describe as barely adequate. You manage to get your free cash certified year after year. It's always been a struggle. Your history of having struggles with current accounting converting into reporting prior period while managing through current period and planning future period, we, as finance folks in government, have at a minimum three years in the air. I call it juggling balls, at all times. We're accounting and being audited for last year, we're managing through this year, and we're planning and budgeting next year and perhaps even beyond. But at a minimum, we as finance directors in the Commonwealth generally tend to have at least three years active going on at once. I think the state regulators were a little compassionate. They wanted to certify your free cash, they didn't want to screw up your town meeting. And they may have not been as aggressive as they should have, but for whatever reason, they knew the problem was there. And during fiscal 12, as you came through with your fiscal 11 records, they put their foot down and they said, "You're going to go back in and you're going to straighten out all of these capital projects, and you're going to straighten out the capital project balance sheets, separate and distinct from the enterprise accounting funds balance sheet, and we're going to get a good look at what the situation is on those balance sheets." And as a result of that, that was part of the tasks that our contract was extended to help with. So we got a good look at how much things had fallen over the five, six, seven-year horizon since we were last here. As I said, this is a science. I'm an MBA. I am a management scientist. My area of expertise is finance. Communications is an incredible, important component in any management operation, in any corporate organization. I can click through these slides and it changes one set of words. Elected officials changes to appointed officials, changes to employees. The communications between all of the parties who have a management role in this effort to provide the best airport you can provide to your citizens and to your visitors were fraught with problems. Communications were breaking down for years, and they continued to be fractured, is a good way, I think, to describe it. As far as you folks go, elected officials, you're the appointing authority, you're the central administration, your appointee communications, I don't think, were able to detect and curtail this escalating autonomous behavior, the poor intra-corporate relations that existed, the annual expenditure excesses that have built themselves into the operation out there, the accounting and reporting inadequacies, the capital project deficiencies, and then, in the last two, three years, budget deficits and capital project deficits that are the result of the inability to properly anticipate what the true business model is going to be for that activity over the 12-month fiscal period. So, we flipped the chart and we moved from elected officials to appointed officials.
Mike, I'm going to ask if we kind of, I feel like we're repeating a little bit.
Okay. So it's the same communication problems from the commission back up and from the finance and capital across. So you have a layer of appointed officials that needs to work on their communications. Your staff, your staff have been bullied and berated and argued and effed it to get things improved and to make things nice. And it just, I think they've sort of pulled the plug on trying to make things better. They need to be respected. We look at procedures. You have a planning process for budgeting and capital, and then you have an approval process. These are our, sort of, beginning of our recommendations. When you're reviewing the future budget, it's important that you dwell on the current one and the one you just completed because they have good information for you as managers as to what might or might not be going to happen going into the future. I think there was some economic diminishment nationally that affected the economy here that wasn't built into the planning that was being done out there in, at the time when the country was going through that problem. It certainly impacted last year, the year we're in, and it may begin to resolve itself as we move forward. And then, the actual voting. And what we basically say is, that vetting process, the manager's review, the board's review, the finance committee's review, the capital committee's review, and then the ultimate town meeting review should be, is multiple vetting opportunities to shake out, and good communications will allow that vetting to happen. And I don't think there's been a willingness to share information to the level that it should have been shared because the relationships have been frayed. We get into processes. Your procurement process is one of those major systems that's best handled globally across your corporation. The airport has struggled with procurement because they've tried to invent that wheel. Their contracting processes, I think, have been underwhelming because they're trying to do more than what they should be doing, and your systems are already in place, they should be embraced. Your accounting and reporting processes should be singular and they should be reconciled. It hasn't been what's been going on. Your capital financing process, you know, chapter 90 is important, and when we, as regulators and enforcement officers and financial leaders are placed in a position of regulating, we basically have to respect multiple gods. So, when we borrow money in the tax-free market and we have to account for things like arbitrage, which I won't bore you with, but those reporting requirements tonight, you made reference to SEC rule X, Y, or Z. The SEC regulates you, the IRS regulates us. We have multiple gods that we have to account to, and thus, I think there has to be some sensitivity introduced into the relationships so that one party isn't totally in a void about another party's needs, wants, desires, and requirements. And many times, your financial and your central administration folks are having problems because the airport isn't a willing party to using their systems that they've got working pretty good for you. And capital borrowing is another area that needs constant attention and very good communications, and that'll clean itself up as well. And then, finally, project completion processes, whether it's debt and grants or any other combination thereof, again, highly regulated, multiple organizations requiring information and reporting. It flows through your central finance office and up to the appropriate authority. It's best achieved through standardized systems. Your universal systems are important because they are universal. And again, project completion and closed-down communications, an improvement in those communications would go a long way. We have some short-term recommendations in the report. We encourage local controls. They can be immediate and effective. I think if you more aggressively manage your appointees and you require them to be professional and courteous and communicative, it'll go a long way. Your finance committee needs to be respected by your airport commission. Your capital program committee needs to be incorporated into that process. I do want to take a moment to highlight the audit committee that you have incorporated, especially in the last year or two. I've been introduced to that group. They have post-audit oversight, as I said earlier. Audits aren't designed to flag future problems. Audits highlight past problems, and they need to be resolved to eliminate future problems. And I have seen, your former member was chairman of the audit committee when I first got involved this year. It's migrated to another chairman who has, I don't know if he's still there, but I do want to highlight that that improvement alone has had quantum results and will continue to have results, and I wanted to highlight that improvement for you because we also like to make commendations as well as recommendations. Town meeting should not vote funds unless adequate multi-level vetting is complete and multiple recommendations are presented to the voters. If you don't feel as though it's properly presented, or it's clean, or it's good, don't vote for it. Hold them up, make them be more accountable. That's the control the legislative body has. Continuing over the short term, I think if the airport commission enthusiastically says, "How can we knock down our roles and focus our energy where it's best used? And how can we use the systems that are in place that your professionals use?", a lot of it will be achieved in a very short way. And if they would embrace and enable the budgeting system that you use, the capital system that you use, the accounting, purchasing, your human resources, you have a pay and classification structure that you use universally across your entire organization except one department. It doesn't make sense that a single department, it's, you know, a tenth or less of your overall operation, is creating all this additional burden on themselves, and they're diminishing their ability to be good fiduciaries. Contracting, same thing. Capital financing, project completion, use the systems that exist and focus on the areas that the airport needs the most, and that'll go a long way. And then finally, over a longer term, and this is where I think the angry folks at the airport, at the newspaper who thought they were getting a forensic audit, got a little management science report, blame me for blaming the citizens. I don't blame the citizens, but I do want to bring attention to you and the citizens that the only solution that I can offer you that can bring less risk and force more management improvements is to change your charter. And if the citizens have to rise up under 43B and collect the signatures and create a charter commission and elect a commission, then that's their right to do. I'm not blaming them, I'm alerting them.
Thanks. Tape change. Okay.
Thank you. So, a charter change can force these changes in behavior, and it can define, if you, one of the things we highlight in the appendix, the only thing we added to our report to you, was your organization chart. We, as government management scientists, suggest and argue that executive authority should be granted by the electorate only to elected officials. And I don't care whether you use a mayor or a board of selectmen, those executive authorities can be eliminated at the next ballot. You elect your water commissioners, they have executive authority. I don't find fault with that, I don't necessarily recommend that. I don't recommend, your planning board is elected, but they don't have executive authority. Many planning boards used to. I grew up in an era where planning boards had executive authority. So, what we have found in government over the 20, 30-year horizon that I've been participating in it is that less elected authority is better. And if you look at the current org chart, there is one, only one appointed multi-member body in your entire organization who has any executive authority. And that's why I think your charter has enabled a non-elected position to have executive authority, and I think that, over time, that authority has gotten away from the individuals who have asserted that authority. And I think you do your citizens' justice when you pull that authority in and you take it, because if they're upset with what is done, then they can throw you out of office. They can't throw an appointed body out of office when they fail them. So, charter change will definitely make improvements. I say in there, all town entities should come under some level of central administration in order to ensure that the universal corporate management controls are utilized town-wide. And I don't, I know I'm proposing that I defrock a public body. I'm actually saying, I think you should defrock a couple of others at the same time, because I just don't think you can count on small boards to, with complete executive authority, to guarantee you that they're going to oblige themselves of the corporate major systems. Citizen initiative actions may be required, is what I say. And if push comes to shove, the citizens can use the petition process to change their charter. And finally, the lack of charter change increases the risk of continued mismanagement into the future because there will never be any rules until you make the change. So, it's time for questions. I'll be happy to take all the questions you want to bring forth.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Why don't we start with the public first and then move to the board, if that's okay? That way, the board can hear the questions. Anybody from the public we'd like to ask? Clifford?
Clifford Williams, taxpayer. I really love Mr. Daley's interpretation of what went on at the airport, but essentially, he's confused when he says there's no rules. There's the 5196A Airport Compliance Handbook that the FAA sets all the rules. So, despite the lack of a charter, there's all the federal and state regulations we're supposed to follow.
That's true, but it doesn't require you to have buy-in to how your corporation operates its overall entity. So yes, particularly as it relates to contracting and dispersing and the keeping of funds and airport operations, that's fine. And that's why I say I think we still need a policy body, and we need somebody vigilantly watching that, but we don't need them doing accounting systems and creating separate HR schedules for positions and misclassifying positions and spending money that probably is excessive. The feds can't regulate that. Your finance committee, your town meeting, your executive branch does that.
Well, maybe my interpretation is wrong, but when you accept the grant money, also within the grant, which is a contractual agreement, it states that you will follow all state and federal regulations, and I would only guess that following the Muni system and 30B, 30B, and all those things fall within that.
Yeah, but 30B is a mass general law. It's not a federal law.
You're supposed to follow Massachusetts.
Right, and that's the problem, it hasn't been followed.
Well, that's my point, though. To say they didn't know, I think they did know. I think it's clear to them.
I've learned, especially this week, not to engage in fantasies about who, what, when, where, how. But I do agree that there were, you are correct, there are rules, but there are bodies of rules locally, federally, state, and sometimes they conflict. So as those of us who regulate and oversee municipal operations, sometimes we have to recognize which is the greater rule and pass on one and oblige a second.
And I also want to add, Clifford, and I think this is a good point, but we don't need to go back and forth too many times, but part of our role here is to make sure that those things are being complied with. And so, I think the real focus here is what we, as a municipality, can do to make sure in the future that the state rules are being followed. And so ultimately, that's, I think, the slice that we're taking out of this look at the whole picture tonight. So, I mean, I think you're absolutely right, there's rules, but we hadn't noticed they weren't being followed either, so I think that's important.
Thanks.
Okay? Any other questions, comments from the public? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself, too, if you would. Thank you.
Thomas Barrett, a concerned citizen, I guess. A lot of people I spoke to in regard to this report, everybody's read this, and on the third paragraph, he should basically say, "The primary culprit for the management problems of the airport is a lack of defined regulations set by citizens." We didn't know. According to this report here, it says, "Back in '05 and '06, there was issues, never was brought up to the people. If we had known, we would have changed it." You know, we change articles every year. We have articles for zoning, we have articles for finance. We would have brought it under control, but it was never advised that it was as bad as it was until now. So, your report says, "Back in '05 and '06, there was issues and questions, but it was never brought to the people." And for you to put it as the main sentence of the third paragraph, "Primary culprit is the people," it's very offensive to a lot.
That's interpretive, and if I misframed the comment.
I'm just making the comment, that's very insulting to us, that's all.
Yeah, and I think we should avoid back and forth, if you don't mind.
So, that's all.
All right. And that's a point, but I think we're going further tonight, so.
I'm just making the comment, that's very insulting to us, that's all.
Yeah, and I, and I think we should avoid the back and forth, if you don't mind.
So, that's all.
All right, and that's a point, but I think we're going further tonight, so if we could have that point made once and not again, I think that would be healthy, so.
Oh, I mean, it was just from '05.
Yep, that's fine, thank you. Anyone else in the public? Yes, Christie?
Mike, thanks for your report, appreciate it. It seemed like throughout this whole report, it sort of culminated in there being a charter change. And I'm just wondering what the success of a change of things could be without a charter change, because that in itself is going to be an enormous process. And I'm just wondering, with all the other components that you showed, what could be the success of changing things without an actual charter change?
That can be done. This goes a long way, this slide right here. A charter change isn't as difficult as you may perceive it to be. It can be done through a town meeting and a special act of the legislature. It can be forced by the citizens through the election of a charter commission. And the point I'm trying to make, although misinterpreted by multiple parties, and I apologize for that, is that the citizens, this purpose of this exercise is to alert the citizens that there are deficiencies and that they do have rights. It is not to blame. And because the anger of a newspaper individual over misinterpreting a report and expecting a multi-volume how, when, where, and who.
Michael, let's not assign motivation to the paper.
I feel it's important, because I think it's misled the purpose of this report. I'm trying to apologize. I do not ever did and have no intention of blaming citizens for any of this.
Okay, I think we can leave that issue beside, but I think what Christie is asking...
That is the quickest way to achieve it. That can all be done. No charter change required. This page, this page. That speaks to what you do if you don't get that page and that page. And that isn't in any violation, either any of these recommendations are not in violation of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 90. So, these recommendations can be implemented immediately, and a lot of things have already been done, particularly through your post-audit exercises. People know there's a problem. You just funded $2.5 million and transferred around another $2.5 million. I don't think it's a secret that there's a problem anymore. These will go a long way to fixing it, and you don't need a charter change. And then, if you don't get this, get the pitchforks, get the sickles, get the torches, and come on downtown, because you've got to do something to stop it, if it continues to exist the way it's existed.
All right, other comments? Dan?
Dan Drake, from the Airport, Chairman of the Airport Commission, also an interested citizen. I would just ask Mr. Daley through you, Madam Chairman, if there are any communities that he would hold up as particular models that we might look to for following this process, given that they particularly might have a Part 139 airport or an airport with significant general aviation activities.
Thank you. Yes?
To answer that, I don't think volume dictates good management. I think management is, good management is required regardless of size. But to answer the question, the town of Plymouth comes to mind as someone who has an airport commission, who has a board of selectmen, who has a town manager, and you'll find that that's a model of no, no airport exemptions in their charter. That charter would be an example of, a charter that doesn't exempt the airport. And those organizational behaviors, such as embracing the standard Panneque Classification Plan, the manager appointing, the manager of the airport, the town manager making that appointment, those are examples of what we're talking about that are definitely happening in Plymouth. The exemption does exist in the Barnstable Charter, but they have a better relationship, particularly now, because they've worked at it. They need to change theirs as well. The smaller towns that I'm familiar with are less robust, but I think Plymouth Airport is a robust enough airport. They have some of the same issues. Fuel is a problem in larger-scale environments, because you can't budget for the volatility of that particular line item. And when we did come out several years ago, we spoke to some of this, you created a revolving fund for your fuel, and it's never been used. And it's going to be now, and it needs to be a little bit better, and so you're going to amend it. But these are examples of things that you've been doing, that maybe you've tripped and fallen over, that would have mitigated some of this. But the example I would give for charter purposes, for seeing a different behavioral pattern, would be Plymouth.
Okay, all right. Anything else from the public? Dan?
Just one more question, if I may, and that's chapter, section 51E of Chapter 90, which gives the, under the state law, gives the, an airport commission requires every town that creates, has an airport to have an airport commission, and gives the airport commission the authority to appoint the manager. Are you suggesting that that can be overridden by the change to the charter?
Yes, as a matter of fact, the language used in Chapter 90 says, "The airport commission may." It says, "The airport commission shall annually organize an elected chairman." And when we read law and we regulate these type of language uses, when we see a "shall", we pretty much know what that means. And when we see a "may," it's a "may," it's not a "shall." So, it's a "may" there, and then you look at the home rule petition statute, General Law 43B, and that's what the whole purpose of that law is about, is allowing municipalities to have home rule to supersede state law. So, yes, I think that between the power of the general law that enables home rule, home rule charters, and the softness of the language in 90, that's why I see the behavior in Plymouth that I don't see in Nantucket. They're both under Chapter 90, they both have airport commissions, one's using townwide systems, and the executive is appointed by the authority, this one's using a voluntary appointed body exercising authority, and that's the difference.
All right, let's ask some board questions, if you have any questions or comments from the board. Yes, Whitey?
Yes, this is a very complex explanation to a rather simple issue. For instance, when I watched the finance committee, I guess I was the only one on the board of selectmen, so I must be responsible for this mess. I was watching the finance committee deal with the airport manager, and the airport manager brought financial data in there, which was totally insufficient, and then they sent it back and he brought in insufficient data. And you eventually, what do you do when the guy refuses to do that? I mean, gee whiz, I mean, that's a simple problem. We don't need all of this structure to determine something simple like that.
I call that abdication. The authority was abdicated over time, and I'm encouraging not to abdicate, to take back the authority, because you're right. Your staff became frustrated and said, "Ah, what's, why bother?" And to some degree, I think the advisory bodies, and perhaps even you and your predecessors and all of the people who, over the years, have been involved in this, sometimes it's easier to throw up your hands and say, "I got too many other things to deal with." So, yes, I agree with you.
I think we knew about this, but we did not know how to accomplish it. We made one appointment, and the appointment got marginalized. And so, it was, it was very difficult. And I talked to some of the people on the commission, and I say, "Where are they getting the money?" "Oh, he's very clever at raising money, he's a genius at raising money." They didn't ask the question of, "Where did he get it from?" These are simple, simple questions that we were unable to, at least I was unable, to get satisfactory answers. How do you deal with something like that?
I think you're dealing with it now, and I think that the gentleman who represents the citizens who's offended by my report, the gentleman over here, people are recognizing that it's a solvable problem, and you're absolutely 100% correct.
And a lot of other things were brought to our attention, such as undocumented workers working unsupervised, and we brought that to the town. Yeah, how do you deal with something like that if everybody's stonewalling it?
The appointment process is my direct answer to you. You don't reappoint people who haven't been helpful, you put new people in and hope that they, sometimes we refer to it as drinking the Kool-Aid. I mean, there's no logic to why sometimes individual boards or parties in governmental entities sort of get off into the deep end. But our job is to just get them out of the deep end and get them back in the waiting pool.
Bobby?
Thank you. Michael, I just want to say, I was one of the citizens back then. I do take responsibility for this somewhat, and I, I'm not, I don't even want to talk about what happened in the past, I want to talk about from today forward, how we're going to get it to the right place. And I find this report refreshing, in the fact that you give us some clear guidelines, which I wholeheartedly agree with. I could never understand, in the last year, the more questions I asked, the more confused I got, as to how we have two separate finance departments for just a division of this town. Ultimately, the voters are responsible for the debt that the airport incurs, and we, as the representatives of the board of selectmen and the appointing bodies to the airport commission, are responsible to the voters. And I never understood how I can't get a clear answer out of an airport finance director, but I can go see the town finance director and get a clear answer. And why do we have two? Why isn't all of these things, budgeting, capital overlay, account reporting, purchasing, human services, contracting, all these things that you list, as far as I'm concerned, should be under one roof? The airport can run, the airport commission can run the airport, they can deal with the grants, they can deal with the work that happens at the airport, but the finances of the airport should come under the town of Nantucket, and I want to thank you for that, for putting that very clearly out in this report.
Thank you.
Other comments from the board, from the public? Yes, Rick?
Patty, just one general comment. It seems to me this, you know, there are lots of questions, issues that come up, and I, I would hope we'd have sort of more opportunities to get at them, some are specific, some are not. So, it's hard to get all your questions out in one night, and I think this is an ongoing process. We're looking at airport commissioners right here, there are three out of four new ones. We obviously have a new manager, so a lot has happened. And I think everybody knows it hasn't been a lot of fun, but things are underway, and I think, you know, as Bobby says, there are a lot of changes here that I think are underway right now. It's going to take a little more time, and we have a new airport manager coming on, and he's going to start today or next week, and all of that has to play through a little bit. And I appreciate Mr. Daley's comment that a lot of this can be done short of a charter change. We can make a change if we want to at some point, but most of this can happen as soon as we're all ready to make it happen. I do have one quick question, just in terms of the report. Mike, I'm used to seeing reports like this, sort of who you interviewed, or how the document developed. So, I know you've been around Nantucket a while, to say the least, but in, without those kinds of sort of backup reports that maybe we'll see from the forensic audit, it's sometimes a little difficult to separate sort of your opinion from others. And I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but those kinds of issues don't seem to be present here, so just understand.
Well, this isn't, this isn't a data-driven report. This is how you behave. It's a behavioral report. And it's where are your systems failing, and where are your people failing? And as, I think the reason that the executive branch asked us to do this is because we've been perched in the catbird seat since we started working on your chart of accounts in the 90s. So, I have personally, I don't have a list of interviews, I didn't, when I did the legal work, that was a different set of circumstances. This is, look at the science and determine whether or not you're employing the science or you're not. And it's easy to say, the breakdowns are in communications, they're in how you manage systems and which systems you manage, and it isn't, it's not a specific, it's more of a universal management style and approach. So, I don't have, I didn't interview anybody. I drafted it, it's been edited and reviewed by parties here, it still has a draft note on it, because if there was some anomaly or error in it, I would correct it, particularly as we vetted it here tonight, but it's what it is, and it's not a transaction-type of review. Yes, you are going to get an overall operational review by the Department of Revenue, and they're certainly qualified to do that, and you're going to get a forensic study that's going to come from a CPA firm, who is trained, and procedures that you're looking for will be, I think, articulated in that. Where did the systems break down? Who broke them down? Those answers that I think the newspaper was looking for in my report, they're righteous to want, but they just got confused that this was a report that was supposed to do more than it did. And again, I just want to apologize that there was no intent to lay blame anywhere, especially on the good citizens of Nantucket. This is a multi-year problem, it's gone on, and it can end very quickly. But the charter is the root cause, and the ultimate way to solve it and prevent it from going further would be to change the charter.
I just want to recommend, from my perspective, too, one of the things that we could do, I recall the Abrams Report, and how with the finance department, we actually came up with a sort of litany of things to essentially address. And we had timetable, we talked about implementation, and all that would be really great for next steps, so that we all, you know, kind of get a sense of exactly what needs to get done, and what our purpose is in terms of making that happen and how that works through. And I don't know, I'm sort of throwing this to administration to sort of figure out from here in terms of who is at that table, but I do know for the audits, having sat on the audit committee for a good number of years, not last year, but before that, it was a good benchmark for us, to make sure that we're not distracted, which is what ultimately happens by just the running of the business here. And when we can get that on paper, it would be helpful. Whitey?
Another thing that really tended to obscure, obscure the situation, was the relationship with the FAA. Often, you go in a certain direction, they say, "Well, the FAA doesn't approve that." And I didn't have any way, and I don't think town management had any way of finding out the truth from the fact and the interactivity. And so, there was sort of a mystery that surrounded our ability to make decisions.
Absolutely. It's not evil to challenge people to prove what they tell you is accurate.
Any other comments?
Yeah, but what does that say?
That basically says, if they tell you the FAA says this, then have them show you the section and the language in the FAA documents that the gentleman spoke of that dictates that. And if they can't show you it, then it's probably more fiction than...
Who's supposed to do that? Me?
Well, whoever's feeling the need to know beyond what they're being given, sir.
Yeah, well, we have to have some way of determining right from wrong, and I don't think any of the selectmen have the time to go into that kind of detail.
Nope, that's your staff. And if they can't get it, then, as I said, town meetings shouldn't move forward without your board, finance committee, and capital committee convincing town meeting that what they're being told and sold is a good bill of goods.
But it requires a level of trust.
Correct.
A trust that we're being given a straight story. And many times, we weren't being given a straight story, and we smelled it, but we didn't know how to bring it up to the forefront.
Okay, Clifford?
So, lucky for you, Whitey, I've created a book, Airport Reference Book. And it starts back with the original deed to buy the land for the airport, goes all the way back to the town meeting in 1930, and I'm not sure if you're interested in it, but I was going to put it online and create copies, and maybe the new commission could get a copy, and you could, it's got the 5196A in it, it's got the airport revenue, 47101, from the Federal Register. So, you won't be lost.
Thank you. Yes, Rick?
Yep. I appreciate Cliff standing up and talking to us, because I think we need to also recognize that a number of citizens were more aggressive in helping bring these issues to the forefront, and I'm not sure their efforts were always appreciated, so I think we ought to say thanks for that. This might all have happened anyway, but maybe we got there sooner. This might all have happened anyway, but maybe we got there sooner because of their interest. And it's not just Cliff, there are a number of other folks. So I think we sort of know who they are, but I just wanted to say that, Patty.
I appreciate it, Rick. All right, anyone else with a comment on tonight's discussion? Thank you, Mr.
On behalf of Selectman Atherton. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we'll be in touch, because as I think as Rick noted, this is the beginning of a conversation, and we'll be continuing to...
Yeah, I think like others, there are lots of, you know, I just think of the SEC reports, Patty.
Right.
One little example of something that is already existing can bubble up to the board. You take a quick look, you get a sense for what it's about, and I suspect there are lots of things like that that can be very helpful as we go forward.
Yep. All right. I have no other matters on the agenda.
Where are we going?
Home.
No, I mean, as far as this issue is concerned, how are we going to handle it?
What I suggested, and again, maybe I didn't make it as clear, but I would like the administration to come up with a recommendation for us, much like the Abrams report, we may need outside, another consultant, I don't know, I'm just sort of putting it out there, but a timetable with some definitive benchmarks, I don't know if that's a commission issue. Again, it's clearly, we've got some systemic problems that have been identified, I think identified well, but at this point, after we've heard them and had public discussion on them, I would sort of turn to the staff to sort of say, make some next step recommendations. Dan?
Yeah, could I follow up after Dan?
Sure, as Dan's walking over, or do you want to go?
No.
No, okay.
If I may, Madam Chairman, I think at this point, I have a pretty good dialogue going with the town manager. And we've had issues, but I think going forward, we're committed to working through them and working together. And, you know, I think all of us need to participate in this process. I welcome the town managers taking the lead, but I think we all need to be part of it and to participate in it and not, frankly, just put it on her, because I think it's, there are a number of perspectives which have to be brought to the table here as we go forward. So I welcome the opportunity, and I think we should absolutely do it, but I don't think it's fair to her, frankly, at this point, to sort of have her try to fill the vacuum on this without our, all of our participation.
Rick, I know I recognize you, but...
Just in terms of the specifics, I mean, I think a timeline is great, I'm all forgetting on a piece of paper, but I also think in the meantime, I think we're all generally aware that a number of items on the list are underway, so to speak, the procurement issue. If it isn't clear to everybody, we have a town procurement officer, it already incorporates the airport. I think the issue in terms of budgeting, we know we're going to have a new airport manager, we're looking for a different person at the airport. I think the commission recognizes right now the primacy, if you will, of the finance director for the town. So we're underway in a lot of these things already.
And I want to add to that, because I think, I'm not meaning to put this on Libby, maybe Libby and the new manager in some level, when I say staff, because there are areas that in Slide 22 were identified as ways that we can sort of share the resources and make the communication happen better, things that are already going on, but there's a list of procedures, accounting, purchasing, human resources, that if the steps are taken to get to a more, you know, a more communicative and combined, I think we're going to go a long way. And I also like the board and would suggest that we would put on an agenda, a conversation about a bylaw change, that we should examine that for our own sake, whether it be in a fall town meeting even as quick as that, or something farther out. I think we've heard enough about systemically what's been, you know, a chronic issue, and we can make that change happen if we want to. So I think that, Whitey, we should have that conversation. Bobby?
I just would like to add that, you know, these are defined as short-term goals. And for me, short-term goals would be, I'd like to see these all implemented, or the majority of them implemented by Fiscal Budget 14, that, you know, to drag it on any longer that, I think would not be good for the town or for the airport.
Okay. Early questions? David?
David Gray with the Airport Commission, also is a citizen. One thing that Nantucket lacks is the general public themselves don't educate themselves a lot on a lot of the topics, as we find out recently. Everyone here was invited to the airport for a tour, and I think pretty much most people took them up on the tour with Bill and Jeff out at the airport. And I think a lot of people learned a lot of stuff. And that's one thing that I think a lot of the general public needs to start to do more, or even the board members, ask questions, get involved, visit different places, and I think that's going to help an awful lot. And I just wish it would happen more throughout the community. There's people that I went to school with that still don't have a clue what's going on in a lot of stuff, and they ask the wrong questions to the wrong people, and they get the wrong answers, so. But I just think, you know, come out and see, ask, call somebody, and I think people nowadays are more than willing to give you the answers you need. And then you guys have a big decision coming up for the new appointees, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other matters before the board tonight? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some...
Second? All in favor?
Pete would do the question.
Thank you.